I'm Amanda Fancy, I'm the dealer-owner of Gauze Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location, so we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location, you know, we had lots of opportunity to potentially look at, you know, outside of the town limits, but it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then, you know, our customer reach is about 45,000. So, you know, we're talking about lots of small communities, you know, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry, because it certainly is somewhere where I think there would be some, you know, strong investment opportunities, for sure.
Well, my name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I've studied opera, the Montreal Conservatory of Music, so this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my family is still in Montreal, so I'm like, you know, I'm trying, I make new friends, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother, his wife is like my sister, so, I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, what the secret is, few ingredients and very fresh. So each recipe would be like three, four ingredients maximum, but I mean, it's just the best ingredients and makes it so delicious. If you think that it's impossible to have your own business, I'm the living proof that it is possible. People want us to thrive. We work together. So everybody helps each other. If you want to be part of a community, it is the community to be part of.
My name is Joel Holland. I'm the owner and operator of Mountain 2 Athletics. I found the opportunity, started this gym in my parents' garage, and now we are currently in an 8,600 square foot facility. A lot of people come here because of the community. The things that we offer here are different than a normal gym. It's an open atmosphere where you come in, the music's played over the loudspeakers, not in your ears, you don't put earbuds in, and just walk around from one machine to the other. You focus on yourself, but at the same time, you get to meet new people. We have three floors, which we do CrossFit, bootcamps, athletic training, and personal training. We have so many other businesses that are growing our economy and feeding into it becoming more populated, a place where people actually stay as opposed to leave. We're growing. We're getting bigger, and a lot of people are on the same push to become a better Bridgewater. I love this place. It's my home.
Good evening, everyone. I'll call this regularly scheduled meeting of Bridgewater Town Council to order. There is an addition to the agenda under 11.3, Storm Yard Debris, so that will be at the end of the agenda. I know everyone's looking forward to that one, so we're going to keep her at the end, keep everyone the edge in their seats. Are there any other additions to the agenda? Hearing none, motion to approve the agenda circulated. Deputy Mayor Tanner, seconded by Councillor Thorburn, all those in favor? Those opposed, motions carried. Thank you. Announcements. Are there any announcements from members of council? I know that Thursday, or sorry, Friday, the 30th, is the second day of Truth and Reconciliation. There will be a service event, if you will, at Bitcheneweska Park, beginning at 11 o'clock. All are welcome. And it is very important. This should not be treated as just a day off, for those who have a day off, or just as a regular day. I hope that people would take time to understand what the day is about, why it is important. And of course, if you have an hour or so, come down to Bitcheneweska Park. It was quite a powerful event last year. You know, Councillor Thorburn was there representing council, and was quite emotional, so anticipate a large crowd again this year. And it will be livestreamed, I believe, yeah, so it'll be livestreamed on the Towns Facebook page as well. The other announcement is really just from last week. We had our Community Connections event, our first ever Community Connections event. Massive success. So it was supposed to be outside, behind the Desperesay, and the weather, it did start to rain, so it was moved to the LCLC, which then, of course, caused the blue sky to come out, and it's a beautiful afternoon. But in hindsight, it was the right decision, because I don't know where all those people would have parked. Like, the parking lot, when I pulled up the LCLC, was full. And so it was the perfect venue. I think everyone really had a great time. Hundreds and hundreds of people went through there. And two of the biggest kind of comments that were brought to me, to my attention, was just how diverse our community has become. And how, you know, especially after two years, two and a half years of not really being out and about, for a lot of people, to be out and see how many new people there are from all over the globe settling in our community. That was really awesome. And the other was just how many young families have moved to, you know, the town of Bridgewater and surrounding area in the last six months, and putting down their roots here. It was just really, that was really awesome to see. So, thank you to staff. I know Kayla is moving off soon to town of Lunenburg. She'll be missed, but she organized that, and I know Rebecca's going to give us a presentation later on this evening, and she was there, interacting with everybody as she does, so stay tuned for next year. We'll, I'm sure we'll have, we'll have to do something, because it was just too big a success not to do that. So, that was great. And I know Councillor Fager and Councillor Colwell were there, interacting. At one point, it was hard to go anywhere, because there were so many people, you couldn't actually get to, you saw someone at the other end, it was impossible to get to them. And by other people, I mean that there was fries at the other end, and I had a lot of trouble getting to where the food was. But I did, I was successful at it all. Any other announcements?
We should probably mention the Harpist Moon Music Festival, if that wasn't on your list. Go for it. So it's on the North Parkade from 2:00 to 10:00 p.m. on Saturday, October 1st, and all kinds of great acts lined up, and very excited to see that in place, bring a chair and blanket.
Yeah, yeah. So far, not going where the weather looks good, so that's great. Anything else from members of council? All right, I will, just before we go to delegations, I would like to acknowledge that the town of Bridgewater is in Mi'kmaqie, the traditional unceded and unsurrendered territory of the Mi'kmaq people, and as always, it's a privilege for us to be here on this land. So, we're down to delegations, and I would ask Casey to come on down to the podium, and she's going to talk to us about South Shore Sustainability Summit, planned for next year. Doesn't matter. No, you can sit there.
Good evening. Is this good to go?
Yep.
Hello, I'm Casey Peterson-Dalong. I feel like I should be here extending my hand from MODL, I'm one of the councillors there, but I'm actually, I'm here on behalf of Starlink Sustainability Solutions and the AIM Network, Atlantic Infrastructure Management Network, to bring you the South Shore Sustainability Summit, which will be happening next spring. It's something that is a new spin on things that we have had in our community before, such as Growing Green. This is meant to be more of a opportunity for municipal units and professionals to come together, as well as bring the community out to discuss sustainability in our region. It's, the first day will be municipal professionals, councillors, coming together to have discussions, and affinity groups, organizations and whatnot, to kind of learn what we're all doing in our own silos, because we're doing wonderful sustainability work on the South Shore. But when I ask council at MODL if they know what's going on in Mahone Bay or Bridgewater, it's a little fuzzy. So it would be really great to just open the doors and have really good communication and collaboration on climate projects in the face of the coming climate crisis. I didn't prepare a presentation. I have a few key things I'd like to talk to you about, and then I'd really just like to open up the floor to questions, because that's where I thrive. So like I said, this is an opportunity to showcase our work, build on our past track record, and also hopefully save some money down the line, because experts are saying that climate dollars these days, if we spend them now, it saves us $13 to $15 in 10 years. So it would be smart to spend now. With that, does anybody have any fantastic questions?
Oh, just fantastic questions.
Only, that's all I take.
Okay, that makes sense. Does anyone have any questions? Venue, I know we talked at the Community Connections.
Which was fantastic. That was such a great event. Great job, guys.
So you had a couple of ideas maybe for venues?
Yeah, NSCC was the one, okay, so, pre-pandemic, mid-Trump, this was the idea that I was kind of shopping around, and then all of a sudden, the pandemic hit, nobody wanted to go to a summit anymore. And so now, here we are in the future, and I feel like it's actually a much better opportunity for us than it was two years ago. I feel like we need to just come together, have a big discussion at the NSCC, or wherever it happens to be.
So is the request for us going to be for sponsorship, or just participation?
Participation. Come and tell us about Energize Bridgewater. Come and learn what MODL's doing, and what Lunenburg's doing in Chester. You know, the idea is, I want it to be regional. Queens, Chester, three towns, MODL, that's, that's what it is. This is one of five summits that's being put on across Atlantic Canada next spring, so it's a really exciting project. It's going to be South Shore, New Glasgow area, Northern New Brunswick, Somerside PEI, and Pasadena, Newfoundland.
Councillor Thorburn?
You did say South Shore, but the region of Queens also being included.
Oh, yes, sorry. If I glazed over them, I meant to say Queens.
Yeah, good, because they're part of the South Shore.
Oh, of course, of course. Oh, right, one key thing that I forgot to mention is, this is FCM funded to 90%, so the participating municipalities do need to kick in a little bit. I think it's, just a second, 1,900.
Each, or total?
Each.
Each.
Yeah, which, I know it's, it's short notice, and it's not budget season, but I think MODL had to have somebody write a grant for an event or something. I don't know. I'll leave that up to you guys.
So it's planned for the spring. Do you know when in the spring?
I'm thinking late April, early May, but I don't have a date set yet. This is, if/when Bridgewater decides to sign on and be a participant municipality, then we're going to have a workshop day where we come together and see what everybody's priorities are, where we want to have it. Like, if everybody says, NSCC, no thank you, we'll think of something else. When we want to have it, and like, if there's any, if there's anything that will really make it a signature South Shore thing, bring me ideas. That's, yeah, we'll have a big workshop day, probably November, and then come together again before the summit. And then the summit is meant to be an ongoing thing. Like, we're not, we don't want to just have a conversation and then drift away and forget about it. I'd like us to come back again in a year or two, or whatever we as a group decide.
Okay, so the timing kind of puts it into our, like, we could put it in budget deliberations and, we're pretty, our budget's usually done in April, so.
What are you thinking? Is this a multi-day? Is it during, during the week, during the days? Because we do have a number of councillors that work full-time.
Yeah, I'm a councillor that works full-time. I know what that feels like.
You get it.
Yeah, so the idea that I'm bringing to the table is it would be a Friday, Saturday, with the first day devoted to professionals and municipal groups, and the second day devoted to the community. But like I said, I'm, I'm open to change if Bridgewater says, this is what we want, and we can find a consensus among all the municipal groups. That's what we do.
Other questions or comments? It's kind of in the wheelhouse of Energize Bridgewater, so.
Exactly.
How we normally do it is we have your presentation, and we refer that to a future meeting, giving us a chance to kind of digest what you've presented, ask questions. I'm sure that we follow-up questions after we kind of have a chance to think about it, and talk to staff.
I have brought this to Leon actually before, so he's familiar with it. And I know Megan Dusette?
Yep.
Yeah, she was one of the organizers of Growing Green, so I'm sure I have lots of fantastic resources here for Bridgewater to tap into.
Perfect.
Yeah. The only hitch, I'll say, is that I wish I had brought this to you sooner, because FCM needs to know by the end of September.
Can we, like, agree, would it be something that we could agree in principle?
You need confirmation of financial commitment? I need a letter of intent. Letter of intent to commit and participate? Yeah, exactly. It was 1,900 or 1,009? 1,900.
Okay.
So that's a, it's a bit of a mouthful. I, I can get you more information, but I should have brought it with me tonight.
So this is the last meeting we have in September, so.
So normally, this type of thing would go through a grant application. Yeah, we'd have to see if we could find out how much is remaining in that. The council would have to decide whether or not they're prepared to consider it outside of the recommendation from the community. Or you could, is the end of September?
I don't think it's a couple of days, so I.
We can find it. We can get the numbers, it's just process.
Yeah. All right, so, how do you want to do on, just leave that?
Yeah, I'll just try to get it before the end of the meeting.
Yeah, so we can circle back to this topic when we get to the meeting, and council can make a decision, one way or the other. Okay, so we'll try to get that to council.
I really appreciate it, and thank you very much. If you want me to stick around for the end of meeting, I'm happy to.
I know those chairs are so inviting and comfortable.
I would just go back there and take.
It's up to you. So, I mean, unless council has other questions, it just comes down to the, to the financials, and we'll have to find it if we have the money in the grant budget, and then if we do, if council's interested, then that's what we'll discuss, so.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you, council. I appreciate your time today. Thank you.
I don't think our next delegation is here yet. Okay, so we can just take a timeout for a second. Yep. All right, let me just keep going. 13 minutes, pause. All right, there we go. So we'll continue on. Actually, our 6:20 delegation is, is not coming tonight, but that topic is going to be dealt with in camera meeting under land contract negotiations, so that that's, that item will remain for after council, okay? In announcements, I should have announced that this is the fifth anniversary of Bridgewater Transit, and on Wednesday, all day, transit will be free in the town of Bridgewater. Huge success, exceeded, I think, all of our expectations. I know it exceeded all the expectations of the experts who said, this is the level of ridership you're going to get, you're going to, it exceeded all that, so that was amazing. So happy birthday to Bridgewater Transit. We have the minutes for September 6th, a special council meeting, and September 12th, council meeting. Any areas or omissions there? Hearing none, motion to approve. Thank you, Councillor Thorburn, seconded by Councillor Colwell. All those in favor? Those opposed, motions carried. Thank you. We're down to planning items, and we have a public hearing, so at this time, I will pause the council meeting, and I will call the public hearing to order. The agenda is circulated, it is to, for second and final consideration of the development agreement for 233 Logan Road. I would like to note that all public participation, advertising, statutory requirements have been met, and so I will turn it over to Mr. Brown, who will walk us through 233 Logan Road.
Okay, thank you very much. So this is the second and final consideration of a substantive development agreement amendment for a larger addition at 233 Logan Road, which is the Michelin Tire Plant. Michelin is located in the Bridgewater Business Park, abutting Logan Road and North Park Street. The top photo shows the southwest corner of the plant, the location of the expansion. Bottom photo is simply the front of the building. So there's an existing approved development agreement that permits the construction of a maximum 3,200 square meter expansion to the existing plant. This application proposes an additional 800 square meter expansion, resulting in a gross 4,000 square meter addition to the existing manufacturing plant. The existing development agreement was. The previously approved development agreement includes two additions, shown with hatching on this slide. The proposed 800 square meters is alongside the one abutting Logan Road, and is clearly part of the same project. As such, it is necessary that it be considered an amendment to the existing development agreement, rather than a standalone application. Michelin is located in the industrial M1 zone. Property is designated industrial on the future land use map of the municipal planning strategy. Here's another look at the proposed site plan. The 1,500 square meter addition will be built on the western side of the building, abutting Logan Road. The, sorry. While the 2,000, the 2,500 square meter addition would be built on the southern side, abutting compressed natural gas site. At its closest point, proposed additions would be 7.7 meters or 25 feet from any property line. The proposed building height would align with the existing building, at approximately nine meters or 30 feet. So through the development agreement process, there are some key considerations: the permitted use, building characteristics, buffering, lighting, parking and access, sanitary water services, and stormwater management. So when looking at any development agreement, these are, these are the main aspects for review, and so when this development agreement was drafted, these items were in mind. Staff held a public participation meeting, July 27th. No members of the public attended. No written communications were received. So when looking into a development agreement, staff review policy of the municipal planning strategy. The industrial M1 zone is meant to accommodate a wide range of industrial and commercial uses, as of right, and the intent of the industrial designation is to provide continued opportunities for a range of manufacturing and industrial land uses within Bridgewater. So within that, we have Policy M1, which talks about concentrating industrial development within the Bridgewater Business Park to minimize the potential for land use conflicts in other areas of the community, and Policy M8, which requires a development agreement for additions greater than 2,323 square meters, or approximately 25,000 square feet, to any existing development. Compatibility of use, compatibility of the building, landscaping, adequacy of infrastructure, emergency services, active transportation parking, environmental impacts. These are our policy that are always reviewed when considering a development agreement, and staff have no concerns with any of these, these statements. Staff also reviewed the industrial development agreement policies, so in that case, we're looking at abutting properties and the boundaries of the site, emissions, noise, dust, radiation, light, et cetera, health hazards, environmental impact, infrastructure compatibility, and the general implementation criteria. So in this case, staff recommend that the town Bridgewater council give second and final considerations to proposed development agreement, and enter into the development agreement regarding property located at 233 Logan Road. That'll take any questions.
Any questions from council? We've had this a couple of times now, it's this second and final reading. No, hearing no questions. It's the applicant here, wishing to make any comment or presentation. Okay, perfect, thank you. I don't see any members of the public here to speak in favor or against, and so this is subject to appeal 14 days after, so I'll just want to make note of that. Yeah, so there is a 14-day appeal period for both the public and the applicant after the decision the council's made. So with no further question or comment, I will close the public hearing. We will return to our open session of council. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Councillor Thorburn, thank you.
I would move that Town Council of the town of Bridgewater give second and final consideration to the proposed development agreement, and enter into a development agreement regarding the property located at 233 Logan Road, in a manner similar to the draft augmentation agreement dated September the 6th, 2022, as shown in Appendix A of Department 21-182C. That the mayor and clerk are. That the mayor and clerk are hereby authorized to execute this agreement and any other required instructions only within the timeframe described in the development agreement. Should the document not be signed within the timeframe described in the development agreement, council shall consider any request to sign the development agreement as a new application and follow the entire process required by the municipal government.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Frasier. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Down to six point two, we have a development agreement application, uh, and a bit of an introduction of this, uh, for two eighty-seven King Streets.
Thank you, Council. So I'm just gonna provide a very short update on two eighty-seven, uh, King Street. It's essentially a change in use. Currently, the authorized use is a cobbler, uh, true repair, and they're looking at moving to a more of a retail apothecary kind of, uh, development. One thing I would note that wasn't in the package that was circulated, we recently spoke with the applicant, and October twelfth is the day we will probably hold our public participation meeting.
Perfect, October twelfth, here in council chamber.
So we have to look at that.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Look forward to seeing that come through. Perfect, thank you very much. Down to correspondence for information, uh, County Annapolis, um, has requested, uh, some letters of support regarding a moratorium on aerial herbicide spraying. Um, so this has gone out to municipal councils, uh, across the province. Um, so this is for your information, and I don't know if you want to, um, put it on a future agenda and ask, ask for some additional information?
Or they're asking, uh, municipal units to write a letter in support of their request, so.
I don't know if the council is prepared to do that now, if you had questions that you need more information on. It's up to you. Is someone, someone prepared to, uh, make a motion to direct, well, I guess, direct myself to write a letter of support on behalf of council?
No move.
Okay, we have a mover. Do we have a seconder for that? Council McDonald, any discussion? Deputy Mayor?
Sorry, what is the motion?
The motion is to write a letter of support, uh, for the county of Annapolis, for their request of a moratorium of herbicide spraying.
Until a formal report.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. The letter was quite interesting.
Yes, it was.
There's quite a few questions on, on this that I can understand why they'd be asking for this. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, and we will draft something and, um, get that to them. Under correspondence for action, uh, we received a letter from Kinship Performing Arts Center Association regarding the, uh, Bridgewater Memorial Arena Community Space Usage. Uh, and so probably thought just for, um, a bit of an update while we're on this topic, I'll ask, uh, Patrick Hurdle to come to the podium, and he can kind of give an update, not just for, uh, the benefit of counseling and kinship, but for the public to know where we're on this.
That's right. Uh, thank you, Your Worship. Uh, as council is aware, uh, there, uh, was an MOU signed earlier this year between, uh, Town of Bridgewater and Social Players, uh, that will see Social Players as the primary tenant in the upstairs space at the auditorium at BMA once a renovation project there is completed. Um, as part of that MOU, um, it was detailed that, uh, Social Players would have the option to look at subletting opportunities in the future, so they could work with, uh, you know, certain kinship or other groups that may be interested in sharing the space with them and cohabitating. Uh, likewise, the MOU also includes reference to the fact that, uh, the town will have access to that facility for its own programming when Social Players is not using it. So just in response to the letter, there are a couple of opportunities, uh, a couple of avenues that we can go through, uh, to ensure that other community groups have access to the theater space in the future. Uh, I know Social Players is really keen on getting into the space first and kind of taking stock on how they plan to use it, what their programming is gonna look like moving into a full-time facility that they'll have at their disposal for really the first time in a long time. And in conversations with them, they're keen to, uh, to just wait until they get in and kind of assess where they are before having those kinds of conversations with other community partners who may be interested in subletting. Um, you know, and it's worth mentioning too, uh, you know, there was some reference to the fact that the Social Players were handpicked, uh, in that letter, and I think it's just worth acknowledging that Social Players actually initiated this conversation with the town almost five years ago. Uh, and they've been a key partner for us in the redevelopment vision for the Bridgewater Memorial Arena. And, um, you know, as the primary tenant going into that space in the auditorium in the future, it's important that, you know, we have an open dialogue with them and make sure that any partnership arrangements in the future with other community groups really also runs parallel appropriately with the MOU that we have with them. Um, also, in terms of a broader update, um, it's important to point out that it's, it's very early days for the work at BMA. There's, there's a lot, uh, to go through, and it will be several, several months before we get to the point where it's ready for, um, occupation, uh, by Social Players. So this is certainly a conversation that, uh, can be had in the future with, uh, uh, the Kinship Group or any other, uh, performance groups that may be interested in using the space. Uh, but it is kind of premature, so I think from staff's point of view, we're recommending that council kind of receive this correspondence, and, uh, we'll follow up on it as we get closer to the point, uh, where the auditorium space can be used.
Any questions, Council McDonald?
Um, looking back at the MOU, do you have any concerns with wording or anything that, um, that might leave us without the ability to make sure that other community organizations are supported in, in using that space?
No, I don't think so at all. Um, it's, as I said, it's very clear that, you know, the players have the opportunity to pursue their own subletting agreements with organizations they want to work with, and the town also has the way to do its own programming in the space, uh, as long as it doesn't, you know, collide with what the players have in mind there. So we've had a great working relationship with them. Don't anticipate those kinds of conversations being a trouble, a problem at all.
Okay, I read it over, and I didn't feel that it kind of tied our hands, but I just wanted to make sure staff felt the same way too. Thank you.
Agreed. Deputy Mayor Tanner?
I'm just wondering if we should introduce these two folks to make sure that any sort of concerns that Kinship Performing Arts, are any requirements, I guess, that they might see for the facility? At least have some input before we do any significant work?
My understanding is they are acquainted with each other already, past partnerships.
Okay.
Other comments or questions, Council Caldwell?
Will this information tonight be communicated with Kinship?
Uh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, no, that's, that's, I think, uh, an update to them is fair, just because I think there's some confusion over what stage we're at. The letter does seem to imply that we're much further along, and things are kind of tied up, locked, locked down. Where, as, as Patrick said, we're quite a ways from that still, so. That's right, yeah. Council Thorburn?
And I think this, uh, let them know that, uh, everybody's trying to work with them, partnerships we've made, that all parties involved is not just Social Players. Very much.
Yeah, it's important to acknowledge, I think, that the players and the MOU we have with them, like, they are the primary tenants, but that the agreement is such that we have the latitude to work to accommodate other groups.
Yeah. Any further comments?
Can you motion receive the letter?
Yeah. Can I have a motion to receive the letter on behalf of council? Thank you, Deputy Mayor Tanner, seconded by Council Caldwell. All those in favor? Those opposed, motions carried. Thank you. Down to reports and recommendations, and we have an update, uh, from our community navigator. So Rebecca's gonna come and give us the midway pilot project update.
Can we move back to the end?
I was so tempted to move it to the end. I've heard laughter.
I'll keep you on your mic. Hi, everyone. So I'm, I'm just presenting today to give you an update on the Navigator Pilot Project. Um, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I'm nine months into the role now, and the pilot project ends on March thirty-first, so I have about six months more with you. And so far, I've worked with about two hundred new and prospective residents to date, so it's been a pretty large volume. Um, this evening, I'm just gonna provide some context about some population trends we're seeing across the province, um, discuss some of my learnings over the last nine months, uh, including some of the challenges and opportunities that I see in the role, uh, share the guiding questions that I've been using to collect some qualitative data thus far, and how those questions have led to developing a plan for the next six months and hopefully beyond. So, uh, just a couple of key things, uh, to give you some context, as I'm sure you all know. Um, prior to the pandemic, um, we had a lot of national information about national population trends that we're forecasting, some really dire circumstances for smaller rural areas across the country. Um, we were warned that small centers like ours were going to struggle to maintain their numbers, um, and that our success would be contingent on our ability to sell our unique strengths in a competitive marketplace. Um, luckily, since two thousand and seventeen, Nova Scotia has seen a real rise in population, um, with the province reaching the one million mark after decades of decline dating back to the seventies. Um, and this is due for a lot of reasons. Um, great efforts in population attraction, certainly, um, through programs like the Federal Atlantic Immigration Program. Um, but it also reflects a bit of a blip in a fifty-year trend. Um, and we've had some unanticipated growth factors we've seen, uh, just over the last few years because of COVID, um, including new remote work options, um, former Nova Scotians retiring and moving back home, uh, from other provinces. And, um, for the first time in many decades as well, we're seeing a lot of young people interested in finding, um, living options outside of urban areas. They still want to have access to the conveniences that are offered in towns like ours. Um, because of this, Bridgewater has fared really well. Um, we're now the second fastest growing community in Nova Scotia after Halifax. Um, so it's really exciting. And still, I think it's important to realize that we don't know with certainty that these trends will continue, um, and acknowledge that even with continued steady growth, um, the reality remains that we have about five million Canadians set to retire in the next decade. Um, so that's gonna have consequences for smaller communities as well. Labor force participation in Bridgewater has been declining since two thousand and one. Uh, we have about fifty-five percent, um, participation rate in the workforce and a median age of about fifty. Um, so it's a little bit higher than the national average. Um, and this is gonna put some strain on our community even as new residents begin to arrive. Um, to overcome some of these challenges, our community needs to be focused not only on population attraction, but on population retention, particularly of young professionals, to ensure, um, the continuity of the services that have attracted them in the first place. Uh, another challenges that, that we face as part of this is that, uh, the young professionals small towns are often really eager to attract, often have really different needs and desires in their community than the existing populations, which are typically aging, um, sometimes low income and in need of their own unique supports. So while attraction is important, it's, I think that it's just a part of this complex puzzle. Um, we need to develop a robust retention strategy that not only focuses on why two residents choose to move here, but why they choose to stay, um, all while making sure that we're not excluding our current community and working to develop community consensus, which is this unified belief among the existing community that new residents really make us stronger. Um, the good news is that there's been a ton of interest in the navigation program over the last couple of months, which I think has been reflected in the nearly two hundred prospective residents who've reached out to me with a wide range of complex questions. Um, my time has been filled in a myriad of different ways. Um, I've been trying to provide that warm reception, um, and handing out welcome packages to new residents. I've been working one-on-one with almost a hundred newly landed residents who've contacted me through our web portal, through email, and have stopped into the museum. Um, I have corresponded with another approximately hundred who've reached out, um, from all over the world. I've had people reach out from Brazil and the Yukon, Ireland, India. Um, I've been collaborating with Nova Scotia Health to provide tours to new and prospective physicians, um, and have participated in their Rural Week program, which is a program that attracts dozens of new medical, uh, students each semester to the town. Uh, I've been doing speaking engagements with groups like Treehouse Eco Village, who are gonna be bringing more than seventy-five new residents this year alone. Um, I've corresponded with some new, um, newly arriving refugees from the Ukraine to help them access the, the federal supports they need to make a smooth transition. Um, and we've been collaborating with Social Multicultural Association on a number of different events, including the July first celebrations. Uh, most recently, I'm working on facilitating a weekly coffee social program at the museum, um, which has been really impactful for new and existing residents alike. Um, so I've been focused really on just two very straightforward questions. Um, why does someone choose to relocate here and why do they choose to stay? And what I've found is that through these discussions and meetings with community partners, is that oftentimes folks are coming for very pragmatic reasons. Um, they've arrived because they have a job, uh, in the area, they're looking for a lower cost of living. Maybe they've moved to, uh, be with a partner or nearer to family, to access services, opportunities that, um, they think might be in our area. Um, maybe they need to relocate, or they're looking for a new, like, a change in lifestyle. Um, and as the community navigator, I can direct residents to the resources and experts that can help address these concerns. What I'm really interested in and where I think I can make the most impact in focusing on the second question, which is why do they choose to stay? Um, and what I've learned is that typically folks are staying in the community for emotional well-being. So while they may have come for a job, they're staying because they found fulfilling activities to do outside of work. Um, maybe they came here for a lower cost of living, and they're staying because they're able to maintain, maintain that. Um, maybe they came for a partner or a family member, but they're staying because they've made broader connections beyond just that single, um, tie to the area. There are services available, but what they need is help accessing those services. Um, and most importantly, um, that they feel that they have a sense of belonging here, meaning they feel they're being treated equitably, that they're wanted in the community, and that there's community consensus here about, um, the impact they're making. So they're forming the vital friendships they need, uh, to really thrive. The good news as well is that in Bridgewater, we have many initiatives already in place for community attraction and population development, which is, uh, as you'll see this evening, I'm sure is outlined in our new Inclusive Economic Growth Plan. Um, our community development department is attracting new businesses and residents through placemaking initiatives, developing a unique community profile for Bridgewater, uh, embracing a green economy, and holding special events, just to name a few. These all help to build Bridgewater's personality as a town. Um, from, from my end, the feedback that I receive is that sometimes, um, these one-off special events, while very important, can leave residents feeling a bit unsure of how to deepen those connections they've made. So they have a really good experience at event, they want to know when the next one is happening, and how can I, um, you know, create even stronger bond with those people that I've met? Um, and sometimes they, they do express that they feel a bit of tension, maybe even resentment between new residents and the existing community. So that, for me, flags an important concern. Um, a recent study from MIT explained that loneliness actually affects the same part of our brain as starvation, which I found really interesting. So basically indicates that our need to connect with others is as fundamental as our need to eat. So in light of this, um, this retention strategy that I've been thinking about, um, I think needs to prioritize three key areas of concern. Um, building community consensus, creating continuity in, in social programming, so events that lead into one another, um, and, and programs that prioritize social connection. Under the town's new inclusive economic growth strategy, I see my sort of piece of the pie falling under the heading of building an inclusive and diverse community. Um, so what I've been working on developing is, um, a strategy for a year-long program, uh, which right now I'm just calling the Bridgewater Welcome Program. And this would guide new residents through their first year and beyond in the town um, with a variety of sequential activities. Many of these we've tried out before, um, but they haven't been, uh, taken place as part of a continuous program. The primary goal would be to ensure new residents have the secure social network they need to stay in Bridgewater. And ultimately, I'd love to encourage them to become participants, um, that these participants of the program would then become ambassadors, um, both formally and informally. It would allow the offerings to improve over time and for the program to grow in capacity. Um, I think it's a really important part of developing their sense of ownership here, which we know is a huge part of cultivating a sense of belonging. Um, so the program might look something like, um, step one, you come to the museum to get your welcome bag from me, which they have been doing already. Um, and it would not only be full of information, maybe they'd get a, a key to the town, which would be a USB stick full of information. Um, but also, uh, we could partner with other community programs and, um, other community partners, I should say, and businesses to offer, um, vouchers and discount cards and things like that. Um, and maybe we, um, make up badges for And maybe we make up badges for them that they can wear on their jacket or their backpack that indicates to other new residents that they're new and want to make a connection. Step two, we would sign them up for our ambassador program and they'd be assigned a buddy. And this would be someone that could take you out to lunch or take you out to coffee a few times in your first year, so that I'm not the only social connection they've made in their first couple of weeks. They would sign up for a tour of the town and a town orientation session with me. They'd get the same treatment that all of the physicians get when they come to visit. We'd roll out the red carpet and give them a tour, and then we'd do an FAQ presentation for them. We'd continue with the events that we do, like our Community Connections event last week that was so successful. And then we would have a six-month check-in with me and a one-year anniversary party. The importance of the check-ins with residents, I've sort of built those into the beginning, middle, and end of the program. And this is not only for me to evaluate the progress of new residents, but also for them to evaluate me. I think this is critical because in order for the program to truly be meeting the needs of the community, it needs to be community-led, meaning that the community actually has the opportunity to provide feedback to me so that we can continuously improve the program as we go. It also allows me to continue on with this qualitative data collection, just like some workplaces have exit interviews. On the off chance that we do have a resident that hasn't settled in at the one-year mark, I'll be able to start understanding why and where we might have been able to support them further. So to conclude, the need to recruit, right now I see that we have a need not only to attract residents, but to retain them, and that this is a vital part of our overall community development strategy. It's important because it's going to be critical to offsetting large waves of retirement that we're going to be seeing in the next five to 10 years. And investing in this role and the Bridgewater Welcome Program is a way of investing in the overall health and wellbeing of the community. Thank you. And I'll field some questions if you have any questions for me.
Yeah, questions from council. I certainly know that this has been raised, you know, council for years, racist a number of times, the need to have something that welcomes people. Years ago, we had the welcome by other groups, but there's certainly a need to have a consistent place and face for people. Just I know I did a physician tour on Thursday. Rebecca would have done the tour, but she was hosting her coffee, the Coffee Connections, Coffee Social, which is just as important. But we stopped in, I had this family physician from the UK, had his young son with him. We walk in and Rebecca comes out and she had a bag filled with items for them. I had to, our storm prep, I had to take a phone call. Rebecca kind of talked to them for the 15, 20 minutes and built those connections. And then we'll follow up because she's connected to our health recruiter, so she'll call Patty and see if there was any more questions. And so if you have that for physicians, we need people of all walks of life, all backgrounds, right? We need engineers, we need food service, we need truck drivers, everything. So I just see it as so important. I don't know if there's any other comments, Debbie Mayer?
Rebecca, so I love the plan. I thought that was phenomenal. So what do you need from us to make that happen?
Well, one of my, I guess, so I've talked a lot about like external threats to population development tonight, but one of my sort of like internal struggles is that I'm in the role 50% of the time. So I am doing a lot of other work that is all related. I make sure it relates. But at the museum, I'm doing administrative work, working in the collection, planning other special events in town. So to be able to work with my community navigator hat on full-time would be a huge advantage. I think there's more than enough work to fill a full-time role. And definitely a big part of the program that excites me is the potential to build some ambassadors, because I could really, I see the potential for, I could use a whole team. Yeah, I think that there's definitely enough work to have lots of people working at this together. And, you know, I think while there's been so much success, I've been able to forge some really strong connections with people. Like I said earlier, I want to make sure that I'm not the only support or the only person that they've met in town. I want to make sure they have a network of support so that it's not so much of a one-man band situation.
So two points. First is, I would argue that you have seven ambassadors around the table. So we should be, as part of our council role, doing what we can to be those ambassadors or be those buddies. The other is that council has to make a decision on this position because it's only funded till the end of March. So that is a bigger discussion that council has to have. And part of the reason for the update was to show council that this is what's happening so far, to give us some information to determine what the next steps are. So that's council's next rule. Next item for this particular topic is, do we see this as something that must continue? And if so?
And I think that council will have to have that discussion well in advance of the end of the fiscal year as well, right? Because budgets often aren't set until March. And this would be a decision that you probably have to make around the end of the calendar year, if not before.
So that topic will have to come back, one way or another. Other questions or comments? Oh, sorry, Jennifer?
Oh, I was just going to ask if it was going to be part of the budget process because it seems like it should be before.
Yeah.
My only request is that she stays on Canada Day. She was awesome when she was 14.
It was great, yeah. Yeah, I've had the privilege of being part of Canada Day and Music on the Riverbank as well this summer. So I've been at every, almost every concert that we've had this summer, and that's been just a great way to be out in the community. And, you know, I think when you join any new community, there's always a little bit of a like, people are kind of wondering who you are and where you came from. But now that I've been there many, many weeks in a row, everyone's warming up and it's been really great to be part of that process. And I do have a lot of folks coming up to me and saying, you know, so I moved here during the pandemic, but I haven't really been able to get out of the house yet because nothing's been on. Are we going to do more of these programs? And, you know, I'm kind of struggling to make some friends. I had a really fantastic interaction this week at the museum, actually. A family who came there here getting their daughter set up. She just moved to the area from Columbia. And her parents are here helping her get sort of acclimated and settled before they headed back home. And they came to our Community Connections event, had a great time. So they arrived at the museum on Thursday. And luckily, it happened to be my coffee social day, so I was able to say, well, why don't you come on in and take a seat and have a coffee with me? So we sat down with the whole family. I did my best to muddle through in Spanish for an hour. They were very generous with me. And we had a great conversation. And at the end, the parents said to me, you know, thank you so much. You have no idea how stressful it is to leave your family in another country, not knowing if they're going to have the support and connection they need. But coming here today and chatting with you and meeting everyone at the museum, we feel so much better knowing there are, you know, tons of people in this community who are willing to help answer questions. You know, we sent them away with lots of information, made sure they were prepared for the storm this weekend. So yeah, that was a really, that was a highlight for me for sure of the month, to just be able to make that really strong bond with the family. Really, you know, just one family, but it really highlights the need, I think, to have someone who's available to answer those questions when they do come up.
Other questions or comments?
Thank you for giving us that update. Appreciate it. I know you're a great asset along the doctor's tours and with your bubbly personality, the tour is quite enjoyable. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your time, everyone.
Thanks for coming. With your indulgence, I'm just going to move one of the lower items up. So I'm going to bring Kirk down to discuss RFP 2022-05, Design Supply and Installation of Ducted Heat Pump, just because I want to see Greg have to sit even longer.
Good evening. My report's not that exciting. So I'm here presenting the report to council on RFP 2022-05. As was discussed, in April 2022, council approved the operating capital budget, which included renovations to the second floor of former Bridgewater Memorial Arena with an approved budget of $200,000. So background, during the spring of 2019, council identified the future of the BMA as a strategic priority. Direction was given to undertake a feasibility study during the summer of 2019 to redevelop the former BMA as a shared community-town operations space. Feasibility study was received by council in the winter of 2020, where council directed staff to proceed the budget process. In the spring of 2020, council gave direction to proceed with renovations to the BMA for town operations only, deferring the decision on community-public facing spaces due to funding. During the summer-fall of '21, town learned it was successful in its application for accessibility grant funding of $100,000 for the installation of an elevator. During the winter of 2021, council entered into MOU with the South Shore Players, as was discussed earlier, for the second floor renovations. Council also approved additional $100,000 for capital project for the proposed renovations for the second floor. Staff issued RFP 2022-05, Design Supply and Installation of Ducted Heat Pump, on 30th of May. We received two packages at closing. Staff reviewed and scored these proposals as per the RFP. The following are the total scores received. So Harry Rhino HVAC scored a 95 and Seacoast HVAC scored a 91. Each proponent supplied pricing for the ducted heat pump system. Both proponents took a slightly different approach to the design, with Harry Rhino supplying pricing for a single ducted heat pump and Seacoast supplying pricing for three smaller ducted heat pumps. The supplied proposals were as follow. Harry Rhino's refrigeration, $89,570.20 net HST, and Seacoast, $120,788.07 net HST. Both proposals exceeded the estimated project cost as approved in the 2022-23 budget, which was $25,000. After the RFP closed and was scored and evaluated, staff contacted a third contractor that did not bid on the original RFP to review the available options and for a cost comparison. While a ducted heat pump will work, so will a ducted heat pump in combination with an air exchanger, which can be supplied and installed at a lower cost than both submissions. For reference, the proposed equipment is the same that's presently installed here in council chambers, just for... The approved budget for the capital project is $200,000, which includes the $100,000 accessibility grant from the province of Nova Scotia. Work associated with this budget is outlined in the below majority of the work to be completed later prior to 2022-23. So there's $15,000 for exterior door ramp, $100,000 elevator grant, which has been awarded, washroom reinstatement of $8,000, ducted heat pump for $25,000, electrical upgrades for $8,000, parking lot repairs for $15,000, fire separations $5,000, and sundry repairs of $24,000, for a total of $200,000. With the worldwide shortages and the cost of all items increasing dramatically, the estimates provided in the Request for Direction data 12th of December 2020 are no longer relevant. Furthermore, staff have been made aware that maybe have some remedial work required related to a form of practical investigation. Therefore, staff are recommending that project scope be reviewed and its costs evaluated. Staff will report back to council with an updated plan to continue this project. As per the MOU with South Shore Players Association, communication should be made to inform this group of the potential timeline changes due to the unforeseen cost overruns to this project. The options, based on a detailed review of the submitted RFP, council may consider the following options. One, council may conclude RFP 2022-05 as well as all submissions came in over budget and direct staff to review the project scope and report back, or two, defer decision for further information. So the recommendation, the engineering department recommends that council for the town of Bridgewater not award the work and conclude RFP 2022-05 as all submissions came in over budget and direct staff to review the project budget and report back.
Thanks, Kirk. Questions or Debbie Mayer? So Kirk, is there a reason we went with a ducted versus non-ducted?
A ducted unit is a typical commercial. That's the typical, the norm.
Okay.
Yeah. And in my mind, that was the ideal way to do it, just so we have proper airflow to all the rooms.
Okay. And now we're being told that you can go non-ducted and do just fine?
Yeah. And we'll do the same thing because the units like these on ceiling will give you your heating and your conditioning and then a separate air handler like you would have in your home, just in a slightly larger size, would give you your fresh air and clean air, basically.
And so when we talk about staff going back and reviewing the project budget, are we talking about reviewing every line item in this project budget?
Yes.
Okay.
I wasn't involved in the original pricing, but that was also two and a half years ago. So there's probably changes on almost every line item.
Yeah, big shift in costs everywhere. So re-scoping is being recommended. That's called out.
When can we expect to hear back with an updated plan?
Hoping by next council, which is two weeks.
Yep.
Okay, yes.
So the repairs that were done to the annex, or I guess removal, that wasn't part of this initial?
No, that was under a separate.
Questions?
I think if we learned anything sitting around here, that things that were done, places that were brought in two years ago, aren't relevant. So we should be really looking at all the capital line items that we had when time is available to get some revised prices. So when it comes time to do them, you don't have to turn them all down. We'll know what the price is going to be because it's been a long time since we've got some of this information. Like Kirk said, he wasn't even involved in it. We know the places are not comparable to today's. Well, we thought we'd see, excuse me, COVID pricing go up, which we did. We thought we'd kind of tackle that. Then we saw inflation kind of make some mockery of how the prices went up for COVID, just because they went up and then they threw the group. But this is not the first project that we've kind of canceled because the price goes. Certainly, if they move on, not going to be the last.
So the recommendation is to re-scope. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor call.
I'm with the town council for the town of Bridgewater, endorse the recommendations of the engineering department and not award the work and conclude RFP 2022-05, Design Supply and Installation of Ducted Heat Pump System, as all submissions came in over budget, and further that council direct staff to review the project budget and scope and provide a subsequent report to council.
Thank you. Second by Council for Gier. Further discussion, Debbie Mayer? So I assume a re-scoped budget is going to have to come back during budget deliberations? I assume all these line items will increase?
We do have a project budget now that's been approved in this year. So what staff are suggesting is we need to revisit that and look at what can be accomplished with what is remaining. And then, yeah, we'll have to, we'll be looking at the budget figures for the following few years, based on that re-scoping as well.
Yeah, so we'll stick within the budget we have. Less work will get done, and then we'll have to figure out what we can do in the future if we decide to proceed with increased costs.
It appears that the elevator was under budget.
The elevator was, yeah, that was 100% funded.
Yes.
So we have access to those funds?
Those funds were provided through a grant for accessibility. So we have to, what's not being used for accessibility at that site is being directed to the pump station 11 and the washroom stand.
For the accessibility?
Yeah.
Any other questions? We have a mover and seconder. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. All right, we are back up to 9.2. Inclusive. Inclusive Economic Growth Plan and Strategic Growth Sectors. Turn it over to our economic development officer. Do you have a badge because you're the economic development officer?
No badges, please. So we've, we've reviewed this a couple of times in different situations. So tonight we're trying, you have the full report in your package, of course, but tonight we'll try and summarize some of the material a little bit and maybe not dwell into it as deeply as we did the last time. I guess to begin with, and by way of some background, we're really talking about continuing to sort of scope out the, the strategy that was adopted earlier in the year in terms of where we place some of our priorities for our focus. So to start with, it's widely recognized that successful economic development strategies are generally built around our assets, our strengths, our competitive advantages, and those aspects of our economy that perform well. And in developing the Inclusive Growth Plan, Group ATN completed some useful growth and industry cluster analysis to help us better understand where the economy is at at the moment. And that work is what we've used to sort of form the foundation of, of what we see is the, the focus for the next five-year period in terms of growth sectors. This, as we've reviewed, is essentially an industry cluster analysis of, of the town of Bridgewater as of 2016. Essentially, this is a, this is a plotting of the different sectors in our economy in terms of their size and their concentration within the town, their degree of growth, positive or negative, those sorts of things. And essentially, they coalesce around four different quadrants, being star, star sectors, mature sectors, transforming sectors, and emerging sectors. So our star sectors are things such as manufacturing and business services, accommodations and food services, things that are growing and have a strong concentration of, of employment. Some of our mature sectors are the health sector and retail sector, which, while having large employment, are not on a, on a heavy growth trajectory and have probably reduced in terms of the, the growth pattern in the, in the, in the, in the last short period of time. Transforming sectors are those that are sort of weak and not, not overly consequential in the local economy. And emerging sectors are those that are small but are, are growing in a positive direction. So that's just a quick overview of what's, what's on the, on the wall. And it's a fairly accurate reflection, having looked at the actual business count in the town in the last six to eight months, which is about 400 different enterprises. It breaks down fairly consistently with what you see on the wall, sort of is a good, good marker to, to gauge the accuracy of this. So it may be, it may be six or seven years old, but it's, in terms of its general trends, it's fairly reliable. So in terms of identifying strategic sectors, the intent here is to focus on our strengths, as I said, to build on some of the existing synergies that we, that we have and expand the number of enterprises operating in those healthy, growing segments of the economy. And basically, I've listed them there in terms of the way we've proposed to group them being manufacturing and light industrial, which I would say the equal focus is on light industrial as manufacturing for a number of reasons. And light industrial probably represents as, as many opportunities for us as manufacturing opportunities, if not possibly more. They're more pervasive, they're more common. The manufacturing sector, as, as we discussed in the past, has provided us with a highly skilled, well-trained workforce, both within the town's manufacturing and, and other neighboring jurisdictions with that heavy manufacturing as well. So we're well positioned to accept new firms that have those types of requirements. Business professional and other services is essentially, represents all the different business services available in the town, whether it be legal or accounting or other professional services or administrative services, and increasingly professional and technical services as well. So that sector is a healthy one in the community and one that has the capability of attracting other types of business by virtue of its presence. And the third sector is, is the retail sector, which is a large component of the economy. And, and in this instance, we're including food and, and accommodations in that as well. The food sector is, is fairly, fairly healthy, but there's probably room for more expansion there and more expansion in the accommodation end of things as, as the community grows. The fourth sector is clean technology and renewable energy, which is essentially a new sector that builds on some of the other priorities that we made, which we can touch on in a moment. This is a summary of the current business count in the community, approximately 400 businesses. And as I said, it tends to sort of mirror the cluster analysis fairly, fairly well in terms of how things break down in the current economy. In terms of clean and renewable energy, certainly established the green economy as one of our four strategic directions for the Economic Growth Plan. So we have work to do in that area, both in more clearly defining what we want to do and, and working to grow that. That certainly will be supported by the Energize Bridgewater Initiative and the ongoing commitment there. It is a sector, as, as I've said, that, that does represent more risk than the others and that it's new. We don't have a lot to, to build upon, we're starting from scratch, but we need some stretch goals, we need some things to reach for, and that's a, it's a good sector, given the other priorities that we've set to do so. And the potential outcomes for that could be good diversification in terms of future job opportunities. So while we don't have a strong base in the community, it, it is, it is a, a sector that is a priority for the province of Nova Scotia, so we can depend upon provincial level for support in terms of their efforts around clean tech and renewable energy. And you know, there's been things emerging there in the last number of weeks and months that, that Bridgewater can be involved in and take advantage of. And so that bodes well for the future as well. So this is our, our long-term, more aspirational goal of the, of the four sectors. So our recommendation would be that council adopt the following economic sectors as a town's strategic focus in terms of economic development, marketing, and investment attraction activities in the implementation of the 2022-2027 Inclusive Economic Growth Plan, being one, manufacturing, two, business professional and other services, three, retail, and four, clean technology and renewable energy. And just a quick slide there in terms of some of our next steps, some of the, some of these will form the focus of our efforts around our marketing, investment, attraction strategies that we'll be putting together over the next several months.
Thank you. Questions? Frank? We did have this presentation last week, still very informative, we ended up quite a few questions, so that was great. All right, what is the will of council?
The council for the town of Bridgewater adopt the following growth sectors or industries to form the basis of the town's strategic focus in terms of economic development activities, marketing, investment, attraction activities, and implementation of the 2022-2027 Inclusive Growth, Economic Growth Plan. Manufacturing, including light industrial, business professional and other services. Retail, including food and accommodations, and clean technology and renewable energy.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Conklin for discussion. It's exciting. It is, yeah. I feel like we're like starting to really focus down along. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Sir?
Thank you.
9.3 is next. Request from the Bridgewater Area Chamber of Commerce to help sponsor the Scottish Trade Mission that is coming. So it's, there's a delegation coming from Scotland. Greg's doing the presentation.
Yeah, I don't have a presentation, but there's a short, there's a brief report in your package in terms of the request. It had been approached by the Bridgewater Chamber jointly with the municipality of the District of Lunenburg to sponsor the transportation element of, of the networking event that, that the local chamber is hosting with this particular mission. This trade mission's been organized by the Lockerbird Chamber of Commerce in Scotland, and they're, they're coming with, I think it's seven different companies, there, that's in your package as well, I believe, in terms of the profiles of the businesses. And they'll be coming to Halifax primarily, but Bridgewater's been selected as, as, as another site for a networking event. In fact, I think it's the only other site outside of the city. And so the request has come to us through the chamber to us and move whether we would consider supporting the, the cost of bringing those delegates to, to Bridgewater and returning them to Halifax for, for the amount indicated, which I think our, our share of that request is $650. So I, in terms of, I guess, some general comments, I think it's encouraging to see this happening with the chamber. I think it's nice to see the chamber sort of taking on something like this that's fairly aggressive and fairly high-profile, which is great. And so I think it's a, it's a worthwhile thing for us to, to, to support in our, in our respect in terms of throwing our, our support behind the event as well, and it's a fairly reasonable, reasonable amount. So our recommendation is to, is to agree to the request in the amount of $650, and we'll receive some coverage at the event in terms of our sponsorship and our logo and whatnot with respect to materials produced for the event.
So on. Thank you. It is nice to see the chamber having something like this. I don't remember the last time a delegation came, so that's really kind of cool. Questions or comments? Getting there? I assume you'll be attending?
Yeah. Oh, see, I can't get a table out of the deal.
There you go. Put your negotiating hat on.
Yeah.
Councilor Frazier, would you like to make a comment?
I would, yours, yes. I move that council approve an expenditure of $650 charged to grants to organizations in response to the Bridgewater Area Chamber of Commerce's request to support transportation for the Scottish Trade Missions networking event being held at Ospar Bridge Golf Club on October 26, 2022.
Great. So we're going to charge to the sponsorship account instead of grants to organizations?
Yes, because we're, we're getting advertising and...
Right, okay. So just, just that slight change in the wording.
Okay, sponsorship?
Yeah, if that's okay with you.
I am.
Okay with the mover? Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Councilor Conklin. Discussion?
One thing, I'm this, I guess I'm assuming MOD Ls already approved this, because they're going after them for the other half of that.
They'll probably approve tomorrow.
Not too sure if the council's...
We're not positive on that. No, Mark, Mark indicated that they were supporting it at the staff level, but he didn't clarify to me by the council that dealt with it.
They're meeting generally after ours, so the indications I got was that it was being seen as paper.
Yeah.
Assuming they'll follow suit, but the value is there, it's being hosted in their municipality, so we'll take it. Yeah, I'm, I'm not too worried about it. So we have a mover and a seconder. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Down to 9.5, RFP 2022-09, Christmas on La Havre event title sponsorship naming rights. Patrick?
Thank you, Ray. So in August, as the town has done for the past couple of years, we issued an RFP seeking corporate partners for the title and sponsorship naming rights to the annual Christmas on the La Havre event. That RFP was open for approximately three and a half weeks, closing on August 31st, and unfortunately, we're in the same position this year that we were last year. We had no respondents by the time 3pm passed on that day. So like last year, staff are coming to council tonight asking for two things. First is the formality of closing RFP 2022-09, Christmas on the La Havre event title sponsorship slash naming rights. That's a matter of protocol that we're required to do. The other request comes through staff from the Christmas on the La Havre Committee. The ask is similar to last year in that they're seeking permission from town council to proceed with going outside of our standard procurement process to negotiate potentially a naming rights agreement for a period of one year with one of the many corporate business partners that the Christmas on the La Havre Committee has nurtured over the past number of years. The process would be that if there is a willing partner in the community who's willing to take on the big thing, which is providing the Santa Claus float for the parade, and in addition, throw a little bit else on the table for the committee to consider, that that proposal would be put in writing, taken to the CAO, and then with council's blessing, the CAO would have the ability to execute and sign off on that on, on council's behalf.
Questions? Or Patrick? Been here before. All right, someone, someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Frazier?
Yes, I move that council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation and close RFP 2022-09, Christmas on the La Havre event title sponsorship naming rights, and further authorize the Christmas on the La Havre Committee in conjunction with town staff to pursue alternate procurement of a title sponsorship agreement for the 2022 Christmas on the La Havre events, and that the CAO designate to be authorized to execute a negotiated agreement on council's behalf.
Seconded by Mayor Tanner. Further comment or questions? I'm assuming called. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. 9.6, Bridgewater Farmers Market Space for Holiday Market.
Sure. Yep, they, they, so the correspondence indicates that they've been quite pleased with the, the use of the former Bridgewater Memorial Arena for hosting their farmers' market, and they, they do have a, a holiday market that they, they will be wanting to start up soon. And they would like to have discussions with council or staff, explore with staff and ultimately come to council with respects to being able to use the inside space within the, on the, on the main level of the Bridgewater Memorial Arena. Anyone that's gone to the market this summer will saw that they had some of the artisans on the inside and between the door and where the former ice surface used to be. So they're looking at that space and perhaps a little more. The recommendation is that we refer that to staff in light of the fact that Kirk was here earlier tonight indicating that we have to do a re-scope. There's some remedial work that we may have to look at with respects to the raccoon infestation that we've discovered that will cause us to just make sure that we know what we're, where we can go and what has to be done in order to accommodate that request. So we'll be bringing that scope back to council, and that will obviously have to take this request into consideration. We do know that in the capital plans that council approved, it was in '23, '24, I believe, that we were looking at renovations to the ground floor to accommodate uses like the Bridgewater Farmers Market permanently within the inside.
Questions? Matt? So it's kind of a... Wait. Haven't, haven't they also in the past used the gallery in the LCLC?
They have.
Yeah, so that might be... So that, I would imagine that's a backup plan, like if this, if this doesn't work, then that would be the best location. I thought the market at the LCLC was fantastic. But their home isn't really in that BMA area, so I guess that's their first choice. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor call well, please.
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater refer the request from Bridgewater Farmers Market with respect to space for holiday markets to staff due to renovations and possible remediation taking place at the former BMA.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Conklin. Had some discussion, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. 9.7, request for sponsorship for the 2022 Para Hockey Cup. You are busy today.
Yeah, it's been a busy night. Council, including your package today, was a letter from the LCLC and Kent Walsh, and you're organizing... the organizing team behind the 2022 Para Hockey Cup hosting here. As council is aware, it was originally slated, this event to take place in 2020 and then again in 2021. We had it bumped twice because of the COVID-19 pandemic. We're excited to announce that Hockey Canada and the LCLC are thrilled to finally be welcoming the Para Cup back, and Team Canada back to the LCLC this November. So the letter that was included in the package outlines a sponsorship request of the town of Bridgewater for this event. Each municipality in Lunenburg County is being approached to provide some kind of cash contribution to this. Staff reviewed the request, and it's the opinion of staff that the financial ask of the town for this event is appropriate. We know that there are significant economic spinoffs. We're welcoming four international sledge hockey teams, their support staff, coaches, families, friends, everyone else coming into this community for a little over a week at the end of November. So it definitely warrants the $5,000 sponsorship that is being asked of the town. The recommendation is that that money could be built into the town sponsorship account, which will be, if it goes forward, slightly over budget based on the amounts that we set aside allocated to the 2223 budget. But it is the recommendation of staff that this money will spend.
Thank you. Questions on this one? Councilor Thorburn? Patrick, can we be able to release the name of the competition?
I don't actually have that confirmed to be on Team Canada and Team USA. There is still some ambiguity around the other two participating teams, I believe, although you may know more than I do.
I'll call it the next campaign.
Yeah, there is immediate release, an immediate event that's coming, I believe, next Thursday. So folks can look forward to more information, including how to buy your tickets, coming out of that event.
Correct. That's probably the time. They'll ask the... Any other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Thorburn?
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater approve an expenditure of $5,000 from the town sponsorship account, 01-21110363, in support of the 2022 Canadian Tire Para Hockey Cup.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Conklin. It's a big event for our community, so I look forward to also seeing sponsorship from all our neighboring municipalities for equal or close to equal services. So this is a regional event. People will be staying all over. We have a mover and a seconder. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. 9.8, donations, SoShore Fieldhouse Society. This is part of the designated community project fund policy. So as always, I'll remind the public, we're not giving a grant from the town necessarily to the field house. People make donations to the field house through the town, so it's kind of an in and an out. I know every now and then I get a call from people saying, "You give a lot of money to the field house for grants." And I have to explain, you know, people make a lot of donations to the field house, which is great. I will add, I took the, and I know, Councilor Fager, you've done this a number of times, took this family doctor through the field house on his tour, and those sensory rooms that are there, spent a lot of time in there. He had a lot of questions, and I could kind of see him kind of thinking through, as a family physician, how he could utilize that space for people that came to see him. And he, like, I think, we only get about an hour for these tours, and I think we were 25 minutes just in these rooms. And I know you've been there like for an hour. They always give, Councilor Fager, much longer to do a tour. I don't know how, Deputy Mayor and I always get like an hour, like we have somewhere else to go. And Councilor Fager will email going, "Yeah, we had a couple hours to do these tours." So they just like you more, it's just fun. It's definitely one of us. Anyway, I just found that fascinating. It just goes to show you that we have the LCLC, we have the field house, and then there's the separate components inside those are huge assets. When you think of how desperate we are for family physicians, I just think, what if this was the thing that tipped that person to say, "Here are the three communities that I'm looking at," but those sensory rooms, or the therapy pool at the LCLC, or meeting Rebecca at the museum, one of those things could be what tips them over. So anyway, it's really cool. All that for this regular occurring community fund grant order for the field house. Someone prepared to make that motion? It's Councilor Caldwell, please.
Move that council for the town of Bridgewater approve a grant in the amount of $3,600 to the SoShore Fieldhouse Society for the multi-use facility on Glen Allen Drive.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Fager. Further questions? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. 9.9, reserve transfers for 2021, 2022. Director of Finance will come down and walk us through these.
I'll just walk you through some of the highlights of the report. So this is recommended transfers as of March 31st, 2022, as part of our year-end process, and just formalizing some of the transfers that weren't in the original budget. So I'll go through the ones that are operating reserve transfers. So first, our operating surplus in the general operating fund was one point, just over, or just under $1.7 million. And we're asking for that, which normally would go in an undesignated operating reserve, to actually go in a reserve for the interchange at Exit 12A. The second one is the Energize Bridgewater or the Smart Cities Project. They actually had a surplus in their operating budget as well of $395,747.98. That actually has to be used for that project, so we're just asking for that to be put in a reserve as of March 31st to be used in future years. The next is the wastewater betterment charge, which was a new budget item and a new charge this year. There was $80,530 in revenue for that, and it has to be put aside to be used for specific projects related to betterment. And so that will go in a reserve to be used in the future as well. COVID-19 Safe Restart Funds. The transit received their own safe restart money, and there was $21,590 left of that, and that can be used to replace lost revenue that was anticipated to recover but hasn't yet. And so it just transfers into our general operations. So what we're recommending, since it's coming into general operating, but really was intended for transit use, that we were able to offset our reduced revenue with reduced expenses to some degree, is that $21,590 to be put in reserve for transit specifically. And then council can decide how they want to use that in the future, whether it be shelters or when the buses need to be replaced. In addition, the Police Commission operating budget included a transfer to operating reserve of $200,000, but they actually had a surplus from operations, so we're requesting an additional $445,000 transferred to the police reserve. There's a couple others there, but that makes a total of $3,147,495 going to the operating reserve. In addition, their capital reserve, we just had some sale of assets and such that resulted in funds that under the MJ have to go into the capital reserve, and that total is $252,292. Not sure if anybody has any questions about those specifics. They're required to be transferred to reserve, and ultimately, when they go in there, they were, because of our reserve policies, they actually require council to either budget to remove them from reserves or make a separate motion at a council meeting to use that reserve money in the future, as opposed to just having deficits in the future that whittles away at it. It's a conscious decision then to use those funds.
Makes sense. Any questions for our Director of Finance? Councilor Caldwell?
Yes, just about the police transfer. So we budgeted $200,000 to be put in reserve. There's a surplus, and then we, so now you're recommending the entire surplus goes over to the police reserve. Is there another option that could be on the table for that, or is that...
Sure. So the town's budget supplements the police budget. They don't have enough revenue to offset the costs, and so we do supplement that budget. However, we are recommending, just because that's specific contract revenue, if that contract were to run out, it would take some time to pivot to rebalance their budget, so that money would be set aside either for that or another use council has. So it could go in the general undesignated town operating reserve. But in this case, since they were already putting money aside, it was indicated that might be the best spot for it for now. Council has full control of the operating reserve. Just because you put it in the police fund doesn't mean council can't make future decisions or not.
I think the thought when we originally started directing that money going to reserves was, at some point, to release our police station. At some point, that lease is up. We have to make a decision what to do, and one of those decisions may be a new police station. And so if we construct a new police station, it's going to, the town's going to pay for it. So whether, if we put it to reserves, it reduces that potential later, or we could reduce the police budget outlook in terms of operating, but it's going to increase when we pay for the capital when we construct a police station. So I guess it was kind of seen as almost six of one, half dozen of the other, you know, later. I think some of the money was used to...
Yeah, the $200,000 that was proposed to be transferred over, that wasn't all of the contract.
Right, so there was already some used to reduce the cost of police.
And some of it, it's just conservative budget on that, so they don't go over, and they definitely were able to generate more contract revenue than they anticipated in the budget.
Does that help you? It's a tough one.
Well, it does, but I guess, I guess ultimately, I mean, we could take that out of that police surplus in the future, but if that's the case, we could do the opposite. So maybe we may have a little more freedom if we put it into our general operating surplus.
There may be optics, say, involved with putting it in the police reserve, that there's an expectation that it's going to be used for police and police services, as opposed to if it's in the general operating, then it's general. It's not necessarily earmarked for any one specific budget.
This is not the first year we've put money in reserves in a police station. The whole intent of that is to have money available and show the two costs, two costs of annual budget, what the police service actually costs. Don't be a bunch of money in...
I think this is the first time it's come back, like...
This much.
This much.
Yeah, last year it was a bit over budget, and we added to it, but this is year three, and it's significantly more than we had anticipated.
So just maybe this creates a need for a discussion before we go into budget season, sitting down, the Police Commission and Town Council, just to talk about how we want that to look.
Next year?
Yeah, so if it's, let's say, council says, "We always want to have the surplus up to $200,000 in reserves. Over $200,000, we'd like it to reflect the true operating cost of police," or something like that. Maybe we, I think it requires us both to get together and have that conversation so that we're on the same page with expectations, because I think, again, we look down the road, whether it's 10 years, we have to deal with our physical building. The ask is going to be of Town Council to pay for a building, if that's the direction we go. We want to make sure we know, if we say, put less in reserves, that when they come and say, "We need X," we don't wonder why they don't have Y.
Yeah.
But again, we just want to be on the same page.
I would agree with that. If we could have that conversation and then maybe set expectations for the future, if everybody agrees with it, because I just don't want to get in a situation where we start having large surpluses and we're just sort of rubber stamping it to go back into police reserves, if that's not... I think we should have a little foresight about what we want to ultimately do with that.
So can we, why don't we, for, like, before budget season starts, maybe why, why don't we for December, November, December, have a joint meeting on, like, our third Monday or something like that? Have a discussion session? I know you're just like, "Oh, good, a third Monday." But just, look, Mondays. Just not December. Okay. You have Christmas plans?
Yeah, and I think it might be healthy to have a discussion with the commission around the purpose of the reserve as well, right? To make sure you're on the same page with that.
Yeah.
Because I believe that it may be anticipated that they can use it for various different things, whereas council may very well, yeah, want to slot it in certain ways.
Yeah, I think we need to, yeah, so we will do that, and we'll make sure we're on the same page or work towards. We'll figure out a date. Okay, does that make sense? Good? Okay. Did you have anything else on that one? So we're just looking for a mover in a second. Oh, you had a question?
Nope. I was going to make a...
Yes, please.
I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approve transfers to operating reserves of $3,147,495.71 and capital reserves of $252,292 as outlined in document 22-153.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Thorburn was first. Further discussion? Question, question may call. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. 9.1 is permanent financing.
Thank you.
You again?
This is, council at the last meeting, special meeting on September 6th, had approved the temporary borrowing resolution for all the capital projects that have been, that are on the capital budget. So this is the actual financing we need to put in place. As of today's date, the fall debenture closes on October 3rd, so it's our last opportunity to apply for financing our projects that are now complete. So I have a report that lists those projects. We have some sewer work, we have the costs at Exit 12A that we've paid to the province to date, as well as sidewalk pile that we're looking to borrow for. The total of that is slightly revised from what was in the original report, and it's $2,340,619.
So just if you refresh your, describe that number. Someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Conklin?
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater approve the resolution for preapproval of debenture issuance subject to interest rate in the amount of $2,340,619 as presented in document 22-154 revised.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Fager. Further discussion? Question, question may call. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. 9.11, recommendation of the Audit Committee financial statements ending March 31st, 2022.
Right. I think this is my last one. So I just wanted to go through some highlights of our audited financial statements that are waiting for council approval, so we can get those off to our various funders and the province by the deadline of September 30th. So I'm just going to go right through the statements. We'll start with the consolidated financial statements on page A4, if you have the statements in front of you. If not, the presentation slides have the screenshots of that information. So just to highlight a couple of things, in the annual financial assets, you'll notice that our cash balances are significantly higher than last year, over $2 million higher as a result of consolidated surplus. We just discussed the transfers to reserves were pretty significant, so that's enabled us to put some funds in our bank accounts. We also have some other receivable increase. We've got some short-term financing to the Public Service Commission until they get their permanent financing in place at the end of this month, and then they'll be repaying that temporary loan from us. On page A4 as well, we have our liabilities and our equity. So the deferred revenue amount of $3.4 million, sorry, is a result of us receiving funding through gas tax and in particular, some funding for the Exit 12A project that we've received, but since the project's not complete, we can't recognize the revenue until then. So at this point, that deferred revenue is just accumulating until those projects are I also wanted to point out that during, for the year-end March 31st, we have capital additions of approximately $2.3 million, and we've amortized assets in the amount of $4.3 million. So our balance of our capital assets is somewhat declining, but with our capital budget going forward, we should see that keeping pace with our depreciation in the near future. Page A5, which is... Page A5, which is the statement of financial activities. Again, just a few things that I wanted to highlight there for council with regard to revenue. De-transfer tax came in significantly over budget. We had budgeted $500,000 and it came in at $1,600, or 66,000, sorry. And so that's quite a bit. It doubled the budget, which is part of the reason why we had such a significant operating surplus for the year. In the sales of service category, again, still on page A5, but I've gone to the schedule on page A29. Couple of things to note there. We talked about the police also in the last report regarding transfers, that they had a significant surplus. So that's resulted in our police services revenue being significant, or is as a result of the police services revenue being higher. And offsetting that somewhat would be the fact that we've got reduced recreation revenue from our own recreation programs, as well as the LCLC, which are consolidated into our financial statements, also having their revenue not meet their budget. In other revenue from own sources, we have licenses and permits. We actually have that significantly over budget for two things. The wastewater veteran charge of $80,000, which was not budgeted, is a new charge during the year, as well, building and development fees have been significantly, significantly over budget by about $68,000 for the year. We also have some miscellaneous revenue, which is a result of things such as sale of surplus equipment, as well as the grants we've received through the designated community project fund for various organizations throughout the town. We recognize the revenue here and then we have a grant expense on the other side of that. You'll also note in the unconditional transfers that, again, the, but the actuals double the budget amount and that was additional funding from the province of Nova Scotia, where they doubled our equalization payment during the year. And just wanted to note, under conditional transfers from other governments, the, the budget amount is over $4 million and the actuals quite a bit less. That's a result of our capital budget having financing from grants of 3.9 million, but we don't actually recognize that until those specific projects are completed. On the expenditure side, just a few things to highlight there. We do have some savings in general administrative and financial management, mostly as a result of projects which weren't able to be completed and vacant staff positions at various times throughout the year. And under other government services, we had, this is where we see the expenditure side of the designated community project funds show up, as well as some COVID-19 safe restart funding. I just wanted to also note that we have a financial statement note, which indicates a compensation to council as well as their expenditures, which match some of the reporting that you can find on our website. We also prepare non-consolidated financial statements and I just, they are not audited. They don't have an audit report, but you do find those also on our website. So I wanted to highlight a couple of things. And our general operating fund, it shows the transfers which were discussed in the previous report with our operating surplus of 1.699 million dollars. And so we show a general operating fund has no surplus or deficit. That's on purpose because we are required to transfer any surpluses to reserve at the end of the year. If there was a deficit, we were required to either fund it with reserves or fund it with next year's tax rate. And then just to give you a picture of the operating reserves, they are on page B9, but as of March 31st, we have just over $11 million in operating reserves. And we have, including gas tax, we have $4 million in capital reserves. And the special purpose tax reserve also has 367,000 in at the end of the year. Those are kind of the highlights. There's also a set of, or an income statement for smart cities, which is a requirement of that project. So that's also included in your package, as well as the trust fund financial statements. The town has a number of funds it holds in trust for the cemetery, as well as scholarships. And so that is a separate financial statement. We won't go through that in detail.
Questions or comments?
Kim, the, the public may want to know why there's a surplus in the special purpose tax account and perhaps what the plan is, given that they're paying for that in their current taxes. So if you want to hit that.
Yeah. So I, I don't have the history of the first year, but I think the special purpose tax was, was charged the first year, but we didn't have to make a debt payment. The debt payment actually fell in the next fiscal year, but we needed to kind of get that money coming in. So it built up a little reserve. And so each year, our special purpose tax actually isn't sufficient to cover the principal and interest payment of that. So each year we take a little bit between 30 and 40,000 from that reserve that helps supplement that. So there's no need to increase the special purpose tax. So it supplements that. And so it's, it's not a large amount, but it just keeps us from funding that in another way to make that principal and interest payment.
Great question. Other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? Please. Counsel Thorburn?
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendations of the audit committee and approve the audit consolidated financial statements for the town of Bridgewater, the non-audit non-consolidated town of Bridgewater financial statements, the audit town of Bridgewater trust fund, and the non-consolidated audit financial statement of the smart cities challenge project for the year ending March 31st, 2022 as presented.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Conklin. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. In your package are the September 6th discussion session briefing notes. Those are also posted online for the public to review. So that was a, that was a full discussion session. We, council received the draft parking report, which again is, is available for the public to review. And parking will be a topic that returns a few times to council as we move forward with that. And then we had Lisa Ryan, who's the director of Seshor Open Doors Association, speaking to council about people in the community sleeping rough options regarding that. And so an ad hoc group to bring some ideas together is going to be formed and the CIOs are going to get together and kind of have that discussion and bring that forward. Then we had some planning staff discussions. Those, again, those are on the website. It would encourage public to read those, reach out to a counselor or myself if you have any questions. And yeah, those are always good to have. Under business arising and unfinished business, we have amendments to policy 109, council video conferencing.
Okay. So these are amendments to policy 109 with, which provide or enable council to have both all virtual or hybrid council meetings, where there's some in-person and some virtual attendance. And that was done, council adopted that once the municipal government act was amended to give council the abilities to do that. So our policy sets out that the mayor can call a virtual council meeting at any time and it's all virtual. There are some requirements that the MGA set out that had to be met. You have to be able to be seen and heard by the, the attendees as well as the public. And if at any time one of those two conditions change for any member, they're considered to be absent. So it sets out parameters like that. And then that, so council had the ability to themselves determine how many hybrid meetings are allowed. So that would mean that how many meetings could a counselor attend when it's an in-person meeting? How many meetings could they attend virtually? So council put that limit at three. And can, you can exceed that with the, with the permission of the mayor and myself. So it could be that you're sick and you've been sick three times and you're going to be sick fourth time and it can be approved. When council approved policy 109, there was some discussion held about committees, because this policy does apply to committees. And there was some concern by the committees that the ability to attend virtually, even if it were an in-person committee meeting, but for a member to attend virtually, enabled that flexibility that perhaps enabled greater participation on some of the town's committees. So there's some barriers that, that individuals may have and to being able to attend in person. It could be childcare, it could be work or other commitments that make it difficult or challenging for them to come to a meeting and attend in person. So committees expressed the desire to be able to have more flexibility. So the amendments that are before council tonight enable a committee to make a determination themselves with respects to how many hybrid meetings they'll allow. The conditions still remain about having to be seen and heard. And then the chair can always call a virtual council, or virtual committee meeting. But in terms of hybrid, the amendments require that the committee approve a procedure or approve, approve, I guess, meeting procedures with respects to hybrid meetings. So it makes the committee have that discussion about how they feel the committee functions in a hybrid setting. Some committees may welcome that as they express their desire to see that. And other committees may feel that they find it challenging and would rather have all members in person. But it leaves it to the committee to decide by developing and approving their own meeting procedures.
Okay. Perfect. Any questions on that? Positive change, I think. Someone prepared to make a motion? Counsel Caldwell?
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the policy 109, council video conferencing as presented in document 22-135, effective immediately, to enable committees of council to vary the number of hybrid video conference meetings.
That's great. Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Fager. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. 10.2, PACE program update and contract renewal. Leon is here to walk us through this one.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a follow-up to a discussion item that was held just under a week ago, where staff provided a bit more information on this item. But in summary, this item follows up on council's approval of the FCM funding and financing contract for up to 4.88 million in low interest financing from the FCM Community Efficiency Financing Program to be dispersed through the town's PACE program or property assessed clean energy. As a key partner in the funding arrangement, Clean Foundation acts as the administrator of the funding program for Bridgewater and other participating municipalities. At the time council made that decision, staff had provided information that the current PACE program administration contract with Clean Foundation, originally entered by the town on May 11th, 2017, expires on September 30th, in just a few days. Therefore, the town needs to find a solution for ongoing PACE program administration services starting October 1st. Staff noted that funding administration for the FCM program and program administration for the technical PACE services to Bridgewater property owners are separate though related functions. A recent program evaluation dated July found that Clean Foundation's overall performance in their duties was positive and that the organization delivers its PACE administration services competently and provides good value to Bridgewater residents. Clean Foundation has demonstrated that it is an effective and collaborative service delivery partner for the town. Staff has also assessed the town's internal programmatic systems and processes related to PACE and finds that their capacity is able to accommodate expansion and that they are working effectively and efficiently. Taking this into consideration, staff has assessed two options for council's consideration for program administration services. The first being to initiate an open procurement process for the next round of PACE administration services and the other to being, sorry, to use alternative procurement to single source these services from Clean Foundation for another period of time. Staff is now recommending to, to town council to proceed with the second option, to single source these services from Clean for the rationale that this is the lowest cost that staff has been able to assess based on existing market conditions in Nova Scotia for PACE program administrators, due to the complexity of bringing in another administrator at this time in the town's development of its programs, and for the fact that Clean Foundation has efficient program services that have been demonstrated and that are well-integrated with the town's needs. In order to justify this procurement, town council may elect to utilize town policy 79, purchasing and tendering, under the alternative procurement practices section, where in the absence of competition for technical reasons and the goods or services can be supplied only by a particular supplier or no alternative or substitute exists, as well as for procurement from a public body or a nonprofit organization, which Clean Foundation is. With this background, staff has prepared for your consideration a draft agreement, which has been attached to this report, that would establish Clean Foundation as the town's PACE administrator for a further five years or five full fiscal years, including the current fiscal year, at which would include the option to have the administrator on as this, as Clean Foundation a year, for a year following the completion of the energized Bridgewater program to give the town options for transition after that if desired. It has been set up as a very flexible contract with exit clauses and with the opportunity to add PACE programming as desired by council. At this time, the single PACE program that has been included with the contract is the clean energy financing program, which is the FCM funded program. And you can find that in Schedule A. There, note that there is no fee structure associated with the general service provision. Each fee structure for PACE service, PACE administration services is based on the program that is being administered. And in the case of the clean energy financing program, the one I just mentioned, that fee structure has been established at $250 per participating property. The agreement does include a detailed meeting and reporting schedule to ensure ongoing communication and performance management between the parties. Staff confirms that the draft agreement meets the requirements of the town's smart cities challenge contribution agreement with the government of Canada, and also that legal and insurance review has just been completed and that there have been no substantive concerns identified. With that in mind, staff recommends that Bridgewater Town Council approve the proposed property assessed clean energy program services agreement between the town of Bridgewater and Clean Foundation and direct staff to finalize and execute the agreement, subject to legal review, which as I just mentioned, just completed today, and any resulting changes being in substantive accordance with the draft attached to the report.
Thank you. Any questions? Leon? I reviewed this the other day. Anyone prepared to make a motion? Counsel Conklin?
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of staff and approve the use of alternative procurement to single source PACE administration services from Clean Foundation.
Seconded by Counsel Fager. I need like, I need my office to go both directions. Any further discussion? Question may call. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just in the nick of time. Under new business, we have application for flying flag under policy 81. This is for restorative justice. So as we recall, we changed our policy. The first time they come to us, it comes to council and then subsequent applications. They still always have to apply. That'll be, it's the same group it'll be. So it's quite straightforward. Yeah. Anyone has any questions on that? Hearing none. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Counsel McDonald, please.
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the application for flying the restorative justice flag as per policy 81, flag flying on the designated special purpose flag pole located at shipyard's landing from November 21st to 26th, 2022.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Caldwell. Further discussion? Question, hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. We're getting towards the end, folks. Here we have the 2022 NSMM Fall Conference AGM Appointment of Delegates. So for FCM and NSMM, whoever goes is appointed because they're a voting member. And so only voting members can vote, obviously, but they have to be appointed by council. So we haven't had a in-person AGM for a couple of years and there are some. So we haven't had an in-person AGM for a couple of years, and there are some big items to discuss. So I am hoping that we'll have a couple of people. I will be attending. Deputy Mayor Tanner, you'll be attending as member of the town's caucus. I don't know if anyone else is interested in attending. It is the 1st to the 4th of November. Counselor Fager, are you interested?
I'm interested. Mustard glitters.
Counselor McDonald? Okay. Anyone else? I'm assuming it's at the Weston. Like, it's usually a Weston. Yeah. Okay. So, okay, so Deputy Mayor Tanner, myself, Counselor Fager, Counselor McDonald, anyone else? Hearing none. Is someone prepared to make a motion with those names included? Counselor Conklin, please. Thank you.
Shall I move that council for the town of Bridgewater appoint Counselor McDonald, Counselor Fager, Deputy Mayor Tanner, and Mayor Mitchell as delegates for the 2022 NSFM Fall Conference and approve registration with other reasonable associated expenses.
Perfect. Thank you. Secondary, please. Counselor Caldwell? All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. So when registration opens, we'll make sure we get that all sorted out.
If something comes up that more than can't go, I will fill. That's not four was a good number. Somebody's going to stay here.
Yeah, yeah. For sure. I'm glad we have, you know, four is a good number. Sometimes you only have one or two, but there are some big items that will have significant impact, especially on towns. So it's good to have some voting members. We have our added item, 11.3, storm yard debris. It's not storm yard.
It's storm dash.
Yard debris. Unless you have like a storm yard, it sounds really cool. We've had a number of questions. We've had a number of questions from folks. So last time we had a big storm, we opened up the Old Town Dump, where you could take your branches and things like that. Oh, that's not an option now because of the Exeter 12A construction, so.
So the request is to see if council's, last time we had a storm of significance, we also had a special collection for yard waste as well, outside of our normal, to enable individuals in town to be able to dispose of their yard waste. They don't have the means to get it to a one-up settlement. So the request is for council to consider authorizing additional yard waste pickup, and also covering the tip fees for disposal of that, because that's how it would happen if G's picked it up. It would be that the weights would go to each unit, so the town would pay the tip fees for disposal of that waste. An estimated cost is around $3,000 to $3,500 to have that done. And of course, it all depends on volume. So if it's that, that's using Dorian's figures. So the volume is probably not as great this time around, but in order to accommodate some of the requests and the needs within the town, that's what's being recommended.
So looking for a motion, if this will counsel to approve the additional collection, as well as the weighting of the tip fees. It's an unbudgeted expense. Just looking for that to be. Counselor Thorburn? Did you get that? Seconded by Counselor Fager. Any questions or discussion?
Is it like, I guess, when they put yard waste, it has to still meet the same criteria as far as the size? Yeah. Can't be a big lemon tree. It has to be cut down, yes.
Well, obviously, when we sort that out, we'll communicate.
Yep.
Yeah. So we have a move on a secondary. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Do you want to just quickly give an update about how, kind of how the town fared through the storm?
Yeah. We fared very well, actually. In terms of impact to resources, Patrick was kind of on as our Assistant Emergency Management Coordinator, and myself a little bit. Engineering in terms of their impact, there wasn't a significant impact to our operations. We didn't have the failures at lift stations and some of those things that we would normally have with power failures, seven result, and we generated around, there wasn't a lot of cleanup to do. So we were very lucky and fortunate. The only issue we had was actually the lift station in Headville, which isn't the town's lift station, but our backwash water from our water treatment process goes through that lift station into our, into our, to our treatment plant. And with that not working, we had to store, we have 24-hour storage capacity at the wastewater treatment plant, or the water treatment plant. So it didn't become an issue, but that was kind of the only alert we really had. So pretty quiet.
That was good. I don't know if many of you received calls from residents. The biggest, the biggest one for me was that, what can I do with all the branches and things? I was really pleased, like relieved, really, is a better word, that what was really looking like it was barreling down on the subshore, just, you know, unfortunately, it's devastating everywhere else that it was in its path, and really feel for the people, especially in New Zealand, the loss of life. But we're very fortunate here. I do want to thank, our staff prepared amazingly well for them to just proactively get things done, make sure we're ready to go, and all hands were on deck. And if it, if it was worse, I'm sure the comments from the CIO would still be, we did well. So I appreciate the public, too, who took it seriously. I hope that the fact that it missed us for the most part doesn't lead people to think the next time this happens that that will be the case. So I was really pleased that how people prepared. And hopefully, the next one that comes misses us, and people will prepare just as well. Appreciate it.
Just a question around the comfort centers. Was the LCL scene used very much? It was open. It's good to see.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions on that for the CIO? No? If we could circle back to the presentation we had from Casey Peterson Delonge, the Subshore Sustainability Summit. So I guess there is money in the grants organization now, but intake, first intake is...
September 30th is the first intake for this fiscal year. It's September 30th, March 1st. So we haven't reviewed what applications may be in to know where this stands. And normally, when we get a grant application, we also ask for some detail on budget and funding, and a little bit more to help the grant committee make a decision about whether or not the grant's warranted. So the request didn't have a lot of detail with respects to the project budget, or who else is funding, funding that. You could direct her to the grant process. That would mean that you'd be looking at the grants through the grant committee, and that probably in October sometime, that will come. You could write a letter of support to say that you support the event and would be willing to participate. Jessica and Leon and team could go and present on Energize Bridgewater, and some of the other initiatives that we're doing under Energy Management Plan. But in terms of the financial commitment, it would be pending a recommendation from the grant committee upon receipt of a grant application.
I'm struggling to find another scenario with only four days to, for an answer to be due, and no council meeting between now and then to review and ask for more detail. Normally, ironically, normally whenever we have a presenter, I always remind them at the beginning that we receive their information, and we, we bring it back to a following meeting in order to review. But in this case, there is no time. So it comes down to, if we want to, want to ask her to make an application to the grant committee, she's not going to make her funding deadline unless council is prepared to commit tonight. But it's, I understand it's hard to make a commitment if we don't have additional information. So I don't... Counselor Caldwell?
Yeah, I don't. We don't have anything in writing. And I feel that the details are a little scant for me to commit to taxpayers' money without going through the process and sort of information. I mean, I don't mind a letter saying supported in theory, but I mean, I feel at this point we need to go through the process.
Other comments? Counselor Conklin?
Is there anything in Energize Bridgewater budget that we could avail ourselves to?
Yeah. Regardless of how you fund it, like out of what account, it's still a grant. So you could, you could say, we don't want to use the $29,000 that we budget every year for grants to do this, but there's only certain ways we can give money to an individual. So sponsorship, if they presented us with a sponsorship package, well, we're over in the sponsorship budget, but we could call it a sponsorship, but we haven't been presented with anything that says that's what it is. So, yeah.
It's also, and Counselor Caldwell was correct, that normally we, we hear, you know, I understand, she explained she's going to invite the other municipalities, but we don't know who's participating. We don't know what the ask is of the municipalities. I assumed it was $1,900. It sounded like everyone was $1,900, but I just, I guess we need a little bit more information, and that's normally what we would ask. So whether we, we send a letter of support in principle and ask her to fill out a grant application, I think that's probably, I'm getting a sense by the nodding heads, that's what people are most comfortable with. Yeah? Okay.
Would it be of funding from this fiscal year, even though the event's next year?
Sounds, sounds like they need it.
Yeah. Okay.
She may have an avenue, too, to go back to the FCM and say, can I just have four weeks' extension on this? I wasn't able to get to everyone, because I got the impression she hasn't been to some of the other councils. So, you know, giving her time to go to the other councils, and I'm sure FCM would be amenable to that. Like, it's in their best interest to have people engaged in this topic, so. Is this a modal initiative, or is it a personal initiative?
I think it's personal.
I think it's personal. Yeah. It was, I named a group she, was it a summit?
Sustainability Summit? That's what it was.
Leon, do you remember Casey Delonge's, what group she's representing?
She's representing herself, with my understanding. She's, she's doing this, but she received apparently some funding from Federation Municipality to be one of the regional posts of this series of climate conferences. So she'll...
Yeah, it's Atlantic Canada.
Five different...
Right. Okay. So is someone prepared to make a motion that we provide a letter of support for the event in principle, and refer her to the grant organization intake process? That make sense?
Yeah. I will make a motion that we support spring 2023 with letter of intent, coming back with further funding, yes. Going to the grants organization. Sorry.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Fager, seconded by Counselor Conklin. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. As I know, do we have an in-crowd meeting following this under Municipal Government Act Section 22-2A municipal property? And can I have a motion adjourned, please? Counselor Thorburn? Seconded by Counselor Fager. We are adjourned.